Good evening, everybody. It is Wednesday, April 24th, 2024, 5:32 PM. And I'll call to order the Free Town Board Select meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. We will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. We are going into executive session for the following reason. Master and Lodge up to 38, Section 21A5, to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to consider the filing of criminal complaints. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Alright, we are now in executive session. We are now back in open session from executive session. Moving on to agenda item two. So this is executive session minutes for 416, 2024. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve but not release executive session minutes from 416, 2024.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item three, this is open session minutes from the same day. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 416, 2024.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item four, this is the bid for the town hall bathroom renovations. And it looks like Stark Architects did the evaluation of the bids and the low bid and also the bid that was not approved, but selected by them, suggested, I guess, would be C-Mat Contracting Co. And the bid came in at $142,450. Any questions or concerns on that?
No, no, they did all the legwork and everything's there, checks off.
Okay, great. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid for the town hall bathroom renovations to C-Mat Contracting Inc. Co.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving on, agenda item five, this is just to approve the town administrator to sign the contracts associated with the town bathroom, town hall bathroom renovations. So any concerns or questions on that?
No.
Alright. So without, I entertain a motion to approve the town administrator to sign contracts for the town hall bathroom renovations.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now we have personnel. I mean, it crosses out.
Yeah. Do you want me to do it?
Yeah, you can do it.
I'll give you a break.
Thank you.
Alright. Agenda item number six, discussion vote on whether to approve the following appointments. Robert Klavecja as Veterans Agent Director and Veterans Grace Officer effective 5/1/24 through 4/30/25.
It's, that should be grave.
It should be grave.
Typo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's my vote.
Grave officer, I apologize. And then agenda item number B, Maurice Dean Ramphill Senior as Moth Superintendent effective 4/2/2024 through 4/1/2027. Anyone have any issues or concerns?
What is moth superintendent?
I'm assuming it's literally just to check on.
Cause he's the tree warden, he checks the moths.
Also, this is a new title, I have never, I don't think I've come across this before.
I didn't know either, yeah.
The moth superintendent, that might be my new favorite one. The measure of bark and woods is always a good one, but.
Yeah, well, so any issues or concerns with that?
No.
So, alright, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the following two appointments as well.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We just have a couple of minutes before 6 o'clock, but I just wanted to say, I don't know if you saw that, the thank you letter I sent you today? That came from Principal Ward about the work that Mr. Mackhammer and his team did at the school. And he was very appreciative and thankful, so just wanna shout out to that.
Yeah.
To them, their team for getting whatever the drainage issues done, so.
Awesome, that's great.
There's some drainage issues around the playground, so now the kids can actually have dry feet.
That's huge, I'm sure all the parents actually really appreciate that.
Yes.
So should we just go to recess for the next nine minutes?
Do you wanna do your signatures?
Yeah, we'll do signatures, that's a great idea.
I'm gonna excuse myself and get my budget book out of my car.
It's authorized Debbie to sign the bathroom contract? And it says grave, not gray.
That was like a Ron Burgundy moment, where you're just reading exactly what some teleprompter said.
Exactly.
I would do the same thing.
And that's just the ledge to the state.
Is it okay that I'm using?
Right here, where it says sign.
Correct. And that's you, and then position moth superintendent.
That's us. I'm sorry. Do I have to, I forgot this, do I have to entertain a motion to go into recess? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to go into a short recess until 6:00 PM when we have the joint meeting with the Finance Committee?
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to come back from recess into open session.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now I'm gonna kick it over to Margaret to open the Finance Committee meeting.
Alright, being 6:02 and having a quorum present, I call the Free Town Finance Committee meeting to order.
Alright. So we're gonna do this in order of, on the agenda, so it's highway first, then town clerk, then health inspection services. Does that sound good, everybody?
I'll lock, paper scissors, Laura, if you will.
Chuck, are you ready to rock and roll?
I have the numbers.
Alright, you have to come into the lion's den up here.
Highway is 420?
Yeah.
Yeah, I went and got all that sorted out.
I thought I gave you that before, but I have it.
I have it somewhere.
It did?
That's my chief sheet omnibus budget.
Here's my omnibus budget, I've written all over it.
I have last week's, the last time.
So, Marg, do you wanna do the same kinda thing we did last meeting where we, rather than going line by line, we just kind of?
Highlight, highlight the big stuff.
We just take a minute and just look at everything and then any questions we have, we come back to you. Alright, thanks, Chuck. So right now, if everyone wants to go through it, so we're starting off with 420. Which, by the way, is the, is that, that's the actual actual highways, then we go into the related budgets. So it looks like flat, except for the this highway survey, or just the request that you're putting in for a 5% increase?
We got a, we got a little bit of a bump last year in our operating and it's allowed, it freed us up to actually get some major projects done. And you asked to level fund the budget, so I'm fine with that.
Perfect.
Hopefully the inflation doesn't keep going the way it's going. Cause the price of everything is through the roof right now, so. We're trying to do smart things with what money do we have, so it's, you know. No money, no work, basically.
Yep.
So, you know, this year we've been lucky. We've, we've done a ton of projects, we've done, you know, like we normally do, help every department out. We just did a pretty major project at the school.
Yep.
You know, to help them out. So yeah, I think we're in good shape.
Great. Any questions or concerns?
My only question for you, Chuck, is highway rentals and leases, which is on page 91. You're already over, just over a hundred dollars. Is that something that you're gonna reply more for and that we should have done something to?
No, every year, every year is different, depends on what projects come up that, that represents, you know, if we get a big drainage project where my equipment can't handle it, we have to, you know, rent somebody's excavator, which usually involves the operator, so we're kinda like two grand a day type stuff. So that money can go pretty fast. That's also equipment that, specialty equipment that we don't have, that's really not worth buying. You know, why would you buy a $50,000 piece of equipment if you can rent it for $500 a day? So, you know, we're just trying to be smart with what little bit of money we got. So, again, it's a crapshoot, you know, that money may not get touched next year.
Yeah.
You know, or that line, you know, directly get touched. So it's just, you know, it's hard to plan for, you know, it's hard to plan.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Yeah, one other thing I see, which I think makes sense, but the, so last, where you level funded the repairs and highway maintenance, it was a pretty decent increase from 2003 to 2004, and I see level funded it, so I mean, we expect that to, I see a lot of work out there, so this doesn't surprise me, but you just see kind of more work in the future that's kind of in line with this year?
You know, I'm assuming everything, 98% of our work is surprise, you know?
Yeah.
Catch basins collapse, pipes collapse, pipes get plugged up, that type of stuff. You know? We had a pretty mild winter this year, so if the roads didn't get tore up with snowplows, and that's gonna help us a lot.
Yeah.
But that money that we got last year's town meeting, that $500,000, that's huge. That's, that's actually freeing us up. I think we're planning on doing a million one in paving this year, which is where we should be on an annual basis, but, you know, a lot of work is gonna get done this year. You know, we just put out $650,000 for the first round. Chipaway Road, Morton Road, Pine Wood Court, Coppin Delane, those are the first major roads we're gonna be doing. And then when Chapter 90 kicks in in July, that's another $400,000 kick. So we plan on doing, you know, probably another, almost $500,000 worth of paving over the summer.
Wow.
So, that's huge.
Yeah.
Huge.
Yep, that's awesome.
You know, so I think budget wise, we're fine, you know? But if I could find some employees that could work out for us, you know? Our last employee lasted nine days.
Oh geez.
And then he, and he was overworked.
Yep.
Which is fine, you know, but it just kinda caught me by surprise, but. So we're gonna hold off on replacing him probably until September, October, so we can save that money over the course of the summer. Where we don't, maybe we don't need that one more guy. Or we're gonna need him in the winter time, you know?
Yep.
Cause sooner or later, it's gonna snow.
Yep.
You know, sooner or later, we're gonna have winters like we're accustomed to.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we need all the hands we can get when that happens. But in the meantime, I'm just gonna hold off replacing him.
You wanna talk about your Warren articles, since we're here?
I'm looking for a truck.
Truck, I put in the capital budget, so.
Okay, a truck is to replace a 2011 Ford F-250 that's basically just rotting away. I'd like to get the money this year, cause chances are, we won't see that truck for two years. It's just the way the world is right now. Ford hasn't even opened up the ordering banks of Tim's F-150, so chances are, you won't see that truck probably till late winter. Looking for a truck, we're looking for a Baco to replace 2005 with, I think, 5,500 hours on it. The, the plan, the grand master plan is, and it's what we've always done, is that machine will go to the transfer station, replace the 1987 loader that has become quite a maintenance, or if you would. You know, we, we just dumping stupid money into that machine and there's really no use for it. The Baco will benefit them better, so they will get our Baco, which will stay on site and crush dumpsters and turnover, compost piles, and whatever Vicki does up there, and we'll get the new one. Again, that Baco served the town pretty well for the highway department, it's 19 years old. And I envision it going to the transfer station and probably gonna be up there for another 15 years.
I have a question for you, how, how long will it take you to get a Baco? Is it the same lead time like other equipment, or you'll be able to get that?
I don't think it's as bad, but it's, you're probably looking at six months to a year, I would guess.
Well, I, you know, the transfer station budget, we budgeted to some money to repair the bucket on the loader, so I'm just asking, like, if that's still necessary, but it sounds like it still might be.
Probably. I don't know what she's getting quotes to do that, but that ultimately, what, like I said, whether we get it this year, we'll ask for it again next year. Like I said, it's, it's served the town well.
Yeah.
And I mean, it is a lot of money, but.
And, and the trailer you're proposing is to move the Baco?
It's to move all the equipment that we have.
Okay.
The trailers we have now, it's borderline. You know, it's one thing for us to, to move a machine from one side of town to the other, but if we have to move that machine to the dealership for repairs or wherever, it's pretty sketchy. It's pretty sketchy, so I think the trailer we have now is maybe eight ton. So we're looking for a 20 ton trailer, so we could put maybe the excavator and the skid steer on at the same time. So when we go to a job, instead of having every trailer we own, we can gang up, you know, put multiple pieces of equipment on that one trailer.
And how good are these numbers, because you know what happened a couple of years ago with the truck, by the time we actually?
As far as I know, they're solid numbers. The trailer company, they said, you know, you're gonna be fine with that number.
Okay.
And again, the pickup truck, we can all hope.
Any other big equipment you're gonna need over the next couple of years that you know of?
Street sweeper eventually, our street sweeper's a 2012.
I feel like those are expensive, never thought about how much a street sweeper is, but it sounds expensive.
New street sweeper now is just north of three.
Yeah.
Front end loader. Probably within five years. Front end loader's a 2012. Problem with it is it's rotting away, cause the quality of the equipment today isn't what it was 30 years ago. And I just replaced two door panels on that front end loader and it was $2,200 for two panels smaller than, combined smaller than half of this table. It's just astronomical, but just behind those door panels are all the electronics.
Yeah.
So, gotta protect them, I gotta protect them, I can't let the weather get in there, you know? And our front end loader is like all the Sanders, it gets washed every time, you know, in the winter time. When we, when we load Sanders with salt, that loader, it gets in the lineup with all the other trucks and gets washed, so. It's not like we, we do our best to keep it as clean as we can, but the salt just wreaks havoc at the calcium and chloride. So, again, I'm, five years, I would say.
Yep.
For that. That, again, that machine's a 2012, we usually get 20 years out of a front end loader. That's always been traditional, that's what we've done for the last 25, 30 years. Again, the quality isn't there, the ruggedness isn't there like it used to be, so again, I don't know if those.
Turned to a 10 year turnaround, right?
Yeah, well, the, our big trucks, we always got 20 years out of the big truck. And it's stretching that now, cause it's like buying a car. It's, you're rare to get 20 years out of a automobile or a pickup truck anymore.
Absolutely.
But, you know, we, we do what we can, you know? I mean, we're, we're in pretty good shape for the shape we're in, you know, equipment wise. Through the state, Chapter 90 buying us equipment, through the town buying us equipment, we're, we're in good shape, but it'd be a shame to let it just fall apart and go back to where we were 30 years ago.
I think we're, you're probably going, we don't wanna take all the hits at once, right, either, so you kinda wanna spread out.
That's why I'm just asking the question, cause I need to know.
No, like I said, eventually, like I said, big dollar items, you're, like I said, you're gonna be looking at a street sweeper, you're gonna be looking at a front end loader. Street sweeper's just north of 300,000, front end loader is probably about the same, you know? So, yeah, they're big, big ticket items.
So, you know, recently, I think part of what's really brought this to light was, we had the fire chief in and we had talked with him and ambulance, and the price increase now is like 40% more, 50% more than it was, what?
Holy yes.
Yeah, within the past couple of years. So Chuck, do they, will they lock us into a contract or no, for any of this equipment?
For the equipment that I'm asking for now, I'm pretty sure we're gonna be pretty safe.
I know you said we would be safe, but I just get nervous because of how astronomical those numbers were.
Fire, fire truck is just that much more of a complex machine.
Yeah, specialized, yeah.
You know, if a valve is normally $200 and it's $400, well obviously, you know, there's 32 valves on a fire truck. So the price is gonna just jump exponentially. You know, not so many valves on a pickup truck.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah, but it's a crapshoot, who knows?
No, I know, yeah.
No one in this room thought this country would be in the shape it's in today compared to what it was. You know, nobody in this room would ever thought, you know, what a gallon of milk would cost, you know? We have no control over inflation.
Yeah, I agree.
And it's tough, and it's tough, it's tough for my employees, it's tough for everybody that works, you know? That dollar bill doesn't go near as far as it used to. And that, the highway budget is the same as your budget at home. You've got so many dollars to play with and you do the best you can. So, as I said, I think budget wise, I think we're in okay shape. The equipment, I have to ask for it, that's my job.
Yep.
Cause if I don't ask for it and Debbie wants another pickleball court and I can't do it because my Baco, my, my, my machine isn't there to run, or God forbid, we have a hurricane, we have a snowstorm, we have who, who are you gonna hang when I don't have the equipment to roll out the door? You're gonna hang me. My job is to ask, your job is to say no. So, we can meet in the middle or we can't, but either way, it's, it's ultimately.
Well, we definitely don't always wanna say no, Chuck.
No, I get it, but I mean, ultimately, I mean, you, I've always argued.
I know, I'm only teasing you.
And we should be able to ask and then let the townspeople decide. Ultimately, they're, it's their coin. And as we all know, the last few years, they haven't been shy, so.
I guess I'll, I'll bring up the salary line, so all department heads, we tried to keep them to 2.5% increase, you're asking for 5%. Not sure that that will be recommended when we get to town meeting floor, are you okay with that?
I'm worried about that at all, I'm pretty sure I'm more popular than the people doing the recommendations, so, again, I think everybody should get 5%, I know that's, you know, we all live in the same world. You know, I got guys, young guys making $21 an hour, how are they ever gonna live in this town? You got a police department that make, a lot of the police officers do pretty well. And I think you only have three police officers that live in town, cause they can't afford to live in free town. That's, that's a tough pill to swallow. You know, I got an employee who had to sell his house because he couldn't afford his house when he came to work for me. That's, that's hard to explain. That's tough, you know? And again, he made the choice to come to work for the town, cause he wanted security and he wanted, you know? And I get it, there's choices that you make, but it's not so much, I look more at the, the younger people that I got working for me. My own kids, they'll never be able to afford to live in the town they grew up in, and that sucks. You know? And to me, a 2% raise is a slap in the face. And I understand insurance is going up, and I understand all the dynamics, we've been doing this a long time. Probably longer than most. But it, it, it's, it's a kick in the teeth.
I'm just asking.
I know, no, I know, I know. I'm just, no, I'm gonna, I'll stick with the 2.5%, I mean, the 5%. People make the decision, and if they decide no, and I'll, I'll take that chance. Because I could ask for 10%. And I'm pretty sure we get it, I think Cheryl's in the same boat, so. No, but, but what I'm saying, I think, I'm pretty sure we're in, we're in good positions and we do good work, both of us. And ultimately, it's decided by the townspeople. So honestly, I think if we ask for a 10% raise, we get it. So, I don't think 5% is a whole bunch.
Alright, any other questions, concerns on, on that 420?
Actually, one question, the Baco, if it goes to the landfills, it, do you think it's in good enough, if you got $5,500 on it? Think it's in good enough shape to last, let's say, a five year period without major? Yeah.
It's, it's basically going to a retirement community.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be worked near as hard as it work, as work now, it's not gonna be digging dirt.
Yeah.
It's gonna be crushing dumpsters and turning over mulch piles and pushing up brush. So I'm sure, well, the last Baco they had up there was a 1972.
Yeah, I know, I saw it. It is, I mean, it's service, it's completely serviceable right now.
Oh yeah. We're, we're able to get pots and everything, it's just, it's getting tired and, I mean, we could spend 40, $50,000 on it and refurbish it, redo all the pins, rebuild them all, you know, go right through it from stem to stern. But then you still have a 20-year-old Baco. And you still have a need at the transfer station for a piece of equipment. So, again, it's not a, it's not a life or death thing, yay and nay.
Yeah, yeah, I, well, I understand that.
I promise I won't lose sleep, lose sleep, and I just, I just, I'm at the point where, how much money do I spend on a 20-year-old piece of equipment? It just doesn't.
Doesn't make much sense?
It doesn't, I mean, I'll do it, cause it's, it's my job, I need the equipment.
Still doesn't make any sense?
No, it doesn't. So, you know, it's the same thing with a, with a pickup truck, you know, it's. I'm guessing we're probably at least a year and a half out, two years out, if we order it in June, truck that's gonna replace the 2011. It's lived its life.
Have you done any, has anybody approached you to do the undercoating for the frames on the Fords?
We, we do that in-house.
You do that in-house?
We.
What, what do you use anyway?
It's not New Hampshire, it's.
It's not black max, is it?
No, it's not wool wax, it's, I don't recall, the company we get the stuff from, it comes in a jug with a air bottle. We do all the big trucks and all the pickup trucks.
Yeah.
We do, we do that in-house, you know, as, as needed, but usually the big trucks will get totally pressure washed, spotless, as clean as we can get them, and we do the frame rails of those trucks usually annually.
Yeah.
Just, just, you know?
Yeah.
A new, a new dump truck sander combination years. What they forwarded me, the last truck that we got was 231 to replace its 275. So, I don't wanna replace a new truck if I don't have to. A little bit of maintenance goes a long way.
Yeah.
So.
Maintenance is everything.
It really is.
Yeah, I know.
But, you know, you can, you can.
Calcium chloride tanks you got on there?
Yep.
It's just on the big trucks, right?
Just the big trucks.
Nothing on the small trucks?
Each, and it's not every one of my big trucks. Five of my trucks, I believe, have calcium. And they, each truck has 80 gallon tanks, two 40 gallon tanks.
And mandatory on the roads though?
I only use calcium when the temperatures dictate. If it's, if we have ice and it's 15 degrees or lower, I use calcium with the salt.
Yeah.
Cause it, it makes the salt, it makes the salt work, if you put rock salt, if it's 15 degrees, the rock salt doesn't do anything. Doesn't do a damn thing. So yet by adding the calcium, it just, it, it drops the temperatures, the working temperature of the rock salt. So, this year, we didn't use, we didn't use calcium once this year.
I wouldn't think you'd have to.
I don't think we used calcium last year.
I don't think you did last year.
But I haven't bought calcium in three years, so, you know, there's a savings there.
The less that's on the roads, the better, I feel.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
Alright.
Any other questions?
No, not for me, so.
We're good.
So we can move on to, I mean, the ice, I mean, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, you go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, no, you go ahead. Snow and ice.
Yeah, it's snow and ice, level funded. Just, just mentioning that. Obviously, we don't know.
Again, it's, it's a stab in the dark. This year, we plowed three times and I think we spent three hundred thousand dollars. Materials, overtime, materials, materials, materials. Rock salt, I think we paid seventy-five-ish per ton. Again, next year, it might be a hundred. It might be sixty-five. Who knows? You know, luckily in the Northeast where we had a relatively mild winter, the stockpiles that are there from this year will be there next year. So the price should still be in the ballpark. Plow contractors, uh, every year, we have to come up with more money. And we still can't get people. It's a generational thing. Anybody under thirty that is somewhat intelligent and wants nothing to do with it. Because it stinks. Kevin, I hear him chuckling in the background. It stinks and nobody wants to do it. And there's no way to get around the insurance requirements.
That's the problem too. It adds an extra level of.
And everybody that signed up this year, everyone, just like last year, took it in the shorts. They gotta come up with fifteen hundred dollars for insurance. Most of them didn't make fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah.
You can only, these are, these aren't companies. These are just local yokels. And it, and it's, it's a gamble that some of them are getting to the point they don't wanna take anymore. You know, they could make ten thousand dollars or they could lose. So, um, I'm guessing this year's power contractors are gonna, we're probably gonna have to bump it up again.
Yeah.
Just to try to entice them somehow. You know, some towns, a little further north of us, like are offering five, ten thousand dollar incentive bonuses just to sign on. And that's before they plow one little bit. I can't ever imagine we're gonna get to that point.
I hope not.
Hope not. But, you know, we were thirteen trucks short this year than what we should be at. And again, with no snow, it's not critical.
And no one's figured out the insurance situation. There's no way like, nah, it's something we should at least look into.
I know, I'm gonna, I, I can look into it. Is there a way we can buy a blanket policy that would cover on them, but I, I doubt it, but I can ask the questions.
I mean, it'd be huge if it could, but you know, some towns just do it like we used to do. Just come on, you know? Make sure your truck's got gas, let's go.
Yeah.
And again, I understand you're opening the town up to a great deal of liability.
Yeah.
But in the same token, we are spending so much money. I say that, you know, we're, we're paying a subcontractor a hundred and whatever, five dollars an hour. You know, that same subcontractor can go work for the state and make three hundred dollars an hour. So, and he's, he'll make a whole lot more money with the state just because they call out way earlier, they stay way later, you know? What we can do in three hours, the state is fifteen hours. It's just the way they are set up.
Yeah.
And they've got, they've got a lot deeper pockets in the town, free town.
Yeah, that's for sure.
That's no, we, we just keep it at that figure. Just, we can't go back now anyhow. And, um, it's just, well, I think we're at one fifty?
Yeah.
That's what, so it's been like that, I think, since I've been on the board.
That barely paid, I mean, it was forty thousand for forever.
Yeah.
Like I said, once you, once you set that number, you can't go back. You can't, you can't decide, hey, we're gonna only go seventy-five thousand. But you can't do that. I don't even think it's legal. You can't, you, once you set that number, you're stuck at that number. So.
But we can go over that.
Oh, yeah.
You can go over budget, which is the same.
That's happened a few years while I've been around.
There, there's no limit. We've never, I think there's only been one year in twenty-five that I've been here that we've gone under. Probably ten, fifteen years ago. We had absolutely nothing that winter. But, uh, again, the demands of the people in town are much greater than they used to be. You know, we, black and white, that's kind of our policy. So that's what we do and that's what we do best. So that's what we hang our hat on.
Perfect. And then the last one, there's your, sorry, you have a question?
Nope, nope. I was gonna ask, I don't think anybody's good questions.
All right. And then just the last one here is the. What was that?
Street lighting?
Street lighting, yes. It looks like level funded or, or one, there's, uh, some streetlight repairs for an extra thousand?
That's, um, again, I, I hate to, it makes me sound like an idiot even more than I usually do, but, um, I really don't know crap about streetlights. We pay the bill.
Yeah.
That was a Larry Ashley move from twenty years ago. Hey, you pay the bill. We can't fix the streetlights. We hire that out. We didn't have the equipment, but because of this world that we live in, you have to have a licensed electrician change the light bulb.
I know.
So I don't have too many of them working for me. So, um, the number that we're, we're asking for level funded, we, we are saving a ton of money when they switched over all the lights to the new style. You know, you're not having near the issues and the, and the usage is minimal compared to what it used to be. So, you know, I could see, I don't even know what we spent last year, but I mean, I could see that number. If that number, if you needed money, you could take money out of that budget and I think you'd be all right.
Yeah.
You know?
Spent nineteen hundred and twenty-eight dollars, but.
Again, the repairs, you don't know, that's a crapshoot.
It's about five hundred dollars to repair one.
And if, if you've got, you know, a couple thousand dollars or whatever you have sitting there, it may not get used, but if we gotta repay or fix one, it's like Debbie said, it's, you're looking at five hundred dollars, time to get somebody out there and up in a bucket and get it taken care of. Because I'm not too keen on sending any of my guys up around power lines.
I don't blame you. Doesn't sound like.
It's not my gig.
All right. Any questions on that one? Good, good. All right. Chuck, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Everybody has a good night.
You as well.
You too, Chuck.
All right, town clerk?
So what's the next budget label? Town clerk. Town clerk.
One sixty-one.
One sixty-two and sixty-three.
Yep, one sixty-one is town clerk, then elections, then registration, one two three. That's it, right, Cheryl?
Yes.
Would you say one fifty one or something?
One sixty-one.
Sixty-one, sixty-two and sixty-three.
All right, just give us a minute, Cheryl. We're gonna review it and then, uh, we'll.
I'm just doing it in order.
In the, in the order of the numbers, yeah. Like what I'm seeing here.
That's not something you see every day, your number going down.
Our budgets are pretty level funded.
That comes with experience too. We've been through that whole year of all the changes. Get a little bit of time and experience. You get a better handle on what your needs are.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
So the town clerk assistant additional gross overtime, is that elections?
That is election based, yes.
Okay.
Can you explain the salaries up above for town clerk assistant?
So my salary?
No, the assistant.
The assistant? So, um, that's based on the, the, um, schedule that was out with the step increase. Or are you talking about the senior clerk? I'm sorry.
No, that, so it was budgeted at fifty-six, three last year. It's now fifty-three at a decrease of three thousand.
Correct, because we went up to, um, also forty hours a week for an X, X amount of time.
Last year.
Last year because of anticipation with all the elections overflow. So now that we've gone through two elections with that, I know what my needs are a little bit more. I won't need as much time.
Okay. And how many hours for the fifty-three thousand for this year's budgeted? How many hours per week?
So that's thirty-six hours a week and I have eight weeks at forty. That's four weeks prior to each election.
Oh, okay.
So that makes sense. You ramp it up before the elections because obviously, yeah.
Yeah, because that's too busy time.
I just wanna say it's way less expensive to pay somebody forty hours a week than it is to bring in additional staff.
Yeah.
It's been a challenge. It's been a challenge to take care of everything that we have that's on our plate with the, the two people that we have. But we're, we're doing our best. We're trying to keep our head above water. But again, like I said, um, we know now what our needs are and what we can handle. Cheryl, did you say for twenty twenty-four, it was forty hours a week the whole year or just for part of the year? It's portioned. So, um, the timeframe leading up to elections, when we have vote by mail and we have all of those auditing reports and all the ballots coming back and all of that, it's, it's, it goes into the forty hours week prior, right before. And we have the two major elections, September and November, and then, uh, the annual town election. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Well, so when you say eight weeks before the election, are you talking eight weeks before each one of those elections or total?
No, I broke it out four and four. I broke it out four and four. So for September and then November and then, um.
Town election.
Right. So because, uh, the town election, this year was a little weird because, um, the town election fell, in between those vote by mail postcards that everybody wanted. And it was a major confusion because that's an additional cost to the town to do all those vote by mail ballots. So as I stated to the board of selectmen, um, earlier, that my goal for next year is I would go in front of the board and not recommend that the town do vote by mail for the local elections because that's the only elections that we have a say in regards to vote by mail. For state and federal elections, we have no say. It has to be done. So it's hopefully with my recommendation of not, not doing vote by mail, as it's gonna be an increase to the town, it'd be the four weeks prior to September and November. Approximately, how much did that cost? Oh, I have, I, I would, I would love to share the details with you. We have it all on spreadsheets and with graphs. Uh, but I'm not prepared today to give you that and I don't wanna give you. Understood. A wrong number. Elections is a scary beast. I know we're not on elections yet, but, um, you know, it's, it, with all the requirements, it's difficult to do with two people in the office. We had, um, mailing house, you know, when I called in four to five election workers and doing all of those kits, sending out all those ballots, doing all the auditing and then the retrieving of the ballots, everything's, you know, whether it's hand delivered to my office, whether it's delivered through the mail, there's a lot of processes involved. No capital requests. The town's been good for the past three years. They've given us, you know, um, they've done a really good job answering the call for the needs for our department, uh, to bring us up to speed and up to par and run things the way they should be. So I don't have any capital requests this year.
And the clickers will be used, right?
So the clickers are another, another battle. I believe the bid was open today.
All right.
The bids were open today and they were more than we, they came substantially more than what we allocated. So we really don't have the funding for the clickers at this point. So we just got the bids today. We're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and see what happened. But we may need to supplement the money to get the clickers. Something maybe we could do with Opera if we, if that's something the board chose to do, but we'll have that discussion once we figure out why we're so far off.
Gotcha.
Well, we have the quotes, so I don't know what's happened between then and now. We do have the three quotes.
All right.
Any other questions for one sixty-one?
All right, one sixty-two, elections.
Everyone's favorite.
Your favorite.
I don't, I don't mind elections. It's, it's the, it's the beast that we love to hate, but it, it's, it's good. You have a, you have a good feeling. You get a good feeling.
This is probably a silly question, but for the postage, obviously, we haven't expended any money yet this year.
So it's funny because I was explaining this to Margaret and to Deb earlier. So a bulk of my, so my, a bulk of my bills all come in, in the spring. I have an entire folder of bills from the two elections of everything that I've, uh, have to pay or have been paying or am paying. These reports were run, I believe, in January, so it didn't really.
Gotcha.
Capture that.
Yeah. And if you look at the past years, it all kind of, it makes sense, right?
So in elections, it's funny too, because, and you've heard this story before, um, with all those RMV changes and the automatic voter registration, every time there's a change, we're sending acknowledgements and notifications out and then we're getting just as many phone calls back in. Why, why, my, I've been a voter registered voter for twenty years. Well, did you happen to go to registry? Did you happen to go to, um, social services for any reason? Mass health, um, the mass health connector. Anytime there's a change, we have to notify them because there could be potential fraud. So it's, um, all of that.
Interesting.
Believe me, I, I'd, again, increase the workload in the department. It's not the same department as it was in the eighties and the nineties. All the extra requirements. They love to make new state laws and new state regulations, but.
Don't take them away?
Yeah, they don't take into consideration when it takes to actually achieve that.
Any automated way to do that?
Any questions on elections?
No, I don't have any.
Not here.
Registration.
Registration.
Registraz is kind of funny because registraz, there's a lot of things that kind of interweave with elections. So certain things, um, so now we're coming up on, confirmation cards and so anyone who did not fill out a census, I can't turn them off, um, or delete them as voter. Because many folks don't feel like answering the census and that's their problem, even though it's state law. So you get a lot of folks who don't respond and, um, before we can remove them, um, we have to send them notifications. So June first is the state deadline, um, where we kind of inactivate anybody who didn't respond. And then we have to send them postcard mailing, say, hey, you didn't respond. Are you still living here? In addition to that, we also have to pay the postage for them to return those cards saying, yes, I'm still here or no, I moved. And you would think with all the new technologies and the different ways that folks can register to vote, either online, um, through the website, through the RMV, through social services, anything of that nature, that it would be so automatic and that they would.
No, there's a bottleneck.
Yeah. And then of course, um, you know, we're in, we're in petition season right now with the state election coming up. So you've got all the nomination papers coming through. We have all of those to get done. That's really a function of the registrar's office. That might be something, you know, it's difficult because they don't have, um, and it's funny because you, you hear it across the state. They don't have access to the state systems, but they're the ones who are certifying those signatures. And we've always done it in-house and not having to call them in, but it, it might get to the point that we're gonna start doing some things to alleviate the pressure off the office and start calling them in, um, when we get the big batches because.
Makes sense.
I feel like I got a better handle on it, you know, maybe from three years ago and seeing where we were and to where we are now.
Yeah.
I'm grateful, you know, the town's been supportive of all the changes. I'm, I'm grateful the election workers have been, um, very wonderful. You know, we lost a lot, you know, it tends to be an older demographic who kind of gets scared with technology, but we've got a great crew. We've provided tons and tons of training. Um, one of my election workers said in the past twenty years, I've given them the most, they've had the most training with me than they've ever had, uh, which is nice.
Yeah.
Because it's a, you know, we're under the microscope, everyone, when it comes to elections and you wanna make sure that people are properly trained and they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's one of the things, like I said, it's that beast that, it's a challenge, but you're proud of it. You know that you've done the best that you can. You've given everybody the tools so that they understand and know. it's a challenge, but you're proud of it. You know that you've done the best that you can. You've given everybody the tools so that they understand and know um, how to do their jobs. Cuz it's difficult. It's when you come into work one election day, once a year, it could be a potential whole year.
Start getting rhythm.
Yeah. So we've done, you know, great things with technology and um, videos and tutorials and setting up um, pages that they can access the information at any time. Um, all that takes work. It's work, but I think we're pretty good. If I could only get a desk that the drawers actually work, that'd be great cuz every day it's a, it's a struggle. My drawers won't open, but in the grand scheme of things, I, you know, I'll deal with that.
Questions?
I'm good.
I'll be happy to share those totals.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I hope you feel better this year.
It's been tough two days, but we're good. We're good.
Um, we did get a new budget for five ten for health services in the package you just given.
Yeah.
Really doesn't have much difference. So either one you're looking at, they're pretty close, so.
I haven't got a one twenty five in this book.
Um, it's one twenty five.
Town administrator?
Town, yeah.
You have it. Oh, you have one cuz I just gave you one.
He's looking for.
I got one here, but I don't have one in the book. There's no one twenty, there's no one twenty five.
I got it.
I have one.
I don't.
Where is it?
Mine? In the beginning, it should be.
I know. I got a one twenty two, but I have no one twenty five.
I'm a one twenty two straight to a one thirty one.
Didn't want you to see my budget.
There you go.
I just was hiding it.
All right. All right.
No, I think he has the, he has the budget. He doesn't have a.
He doesn't have the tab.
The tab.
I'm, I'll go over my budget.
All right, Kevin. Same thing. We're gonna take a minute, go through it. We're starting off with four thirty three. Does everyone agree with that?
Oh.
No?
Forty three?
What's four thirty three?
Four thirty three.
Uh, maybe I'm wrong.
Is it trash?
Oh, is that trash?
Yeah, I just did it in order.
Well, the trash budget, actually, Luanne and I kind of put that together. So if you have questions.
Okay, then where do you guys wanna start here?
So try, do you wanna just?
Do you want me to just go through trash?
Yep.
You know, the, the trash curbside and recycling is the gorgeous contract that we talked about at a selectmen's meeting. That's gonna be the amount to pick up everybody's curbside trash. Um, and the following is uh, trash fees, um, acceptance of Crepo Hill, what the, what we, what we pay to them. And then there's trash bags in here. So we looked at the state bid list, figured out what we could get trash bags for, what we've got the averages for the past and what has been purchased and kind of kept it at the same. And that's how we budgeted it. So it's pretty level funded. Just what it costs to get rid of trash is very expensive, almost at a million dollars when you think about it, eight hundred and thirty four thousand dollars to get rid of trash. Now that's offset by the trash bags. But that's it really. Any, I mean, I don't know if I can answer all your questions, but that's basically the crux of that budget.
Did we just sign a three-year contract with them?
No, we're working on it.
Oh, working on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought we awarded.
Gorgeous?
Yeah.
I feel like we did, no?
I thought we awarded.
I know we approved it. I'm working on adding language for the um,
Oh, okay. That's what it was. All right. I knew we approved something.
Yeah, the contract actually hasn't been signed. I'm working on adding some stipulations for, um, in fact, I just talked to them. And Crepo Hill is running out of room and they may not take our trash. We have one more year contract with them. Um, after that, we may have to go to a different facility.
CMAS or?
Yeah, CMAS. And I wanted to have a contingency in the contract so that we wouldn't have to be coming back and redoing a contract. So uh, Borges Trucking and I have come up with the language for that stipulation that will go in the new contract. I just haven't had a chance to draft it.
Yeah, that.
Basically, she said the, you know, the, the fee's gonna be similar. It's just the, the CMAS happens to have a lot of waiting time and that's the concern. So I thought it best to just put something in that if it's greater than a fifteen-minute waiting time, it'd be so much per hour and that would, that's how we'll handle CMAS. Because they can wait three hours up there to dump the trash and that will be obviously a prevailing rage for them. It is very expensive.
And I remember too, like, when we looked at their bid, it was significantly more expensive for a ton.
CMAS?
CMAS was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, Crepo Hill's been a good name. It was, they've done, I mean, in terms of pricing, I, I don't know what we're gonna do.
I'm unsure their closer schedule, their closing schedule. I don't know when they're set to close. Um, but I know in the past, as we've approached that year mark, we, we often talk about starting that contract extension conversation with them. Would they be amenable to a one or two-year contract extension while we get some other ducks in a row?
Yeah.
But it's not gonna get any cheaper. That I can guarantee.
Yeah.
No, and, and I don't wanna drag this on as that, but we, we also talk about the issue of is if that place closes right where we're at right now and then everyone that's there is gonna be trying to go to CMAS because there's no.
Yeah, this isn't, not a unique phenomenon to, to, to freeze down.
So, so it's, you know, some about getting out ahead of it, but also we don't wanna spend the extra money right now that we don't, you know, if we don't have to. So that's a conversation for another day at this point, but it's.
Trash is not gonna get any cheaper.
No, no, diesel fuel's not getting any cheaper. Trash isn't gonna get any cheaper. The cost of making the plastic guys isn't gonna get any cheaper. Ink's not gonna get any cheaper.
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, do you know how much gets offset by the purchase of the bags?
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
I just wrote a note. I wanna say it's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
I'm going to message Matt tomorrow and ask him and I'll just send out.
Yeah.
I calculated it and it's right.
I think we tried to get some numbers over to you and why that number sticks in my head, I don't know, but.
I think it was around a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So still very expensive.
Takes the edge off, but it's still.
When you add the eight hundred and thirty-four thousand for this budget and then the transportation, I mean, there's, there's, there's a budget there too.
So if we try to raise the prices on those bags, we'll have a riot, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, I know we're, we're gonna try to get a little, see if we can get better quality cuz they're rough.
Limited manufacturers. Quality seems to be a hit or miss come and go. Uh, you know, who's working at the plant that day almost, uh, consistency in color. The contract is, is uh, and, and its costs are dependent on the availability of ink and how much it costs at the time. It's, it's a, it's a, a very volatile market because most of the stuff is petroleum-based.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Plastic, ink, that kind of stuff. So, um, yeah, we keep muddling along. Uh, we've had good stretches of, you know, the bags are good. And then you get some and you just, holy smokes, it comes in waves, right? And so our policy, just so anybody understands, we try to get credit for those, right? So if you come and return them to us, we will give you new bags. Uh, and we try to offset that.
Yeah.
Um, but it's not, it, it, it's not as great a number that it's, it's going to be costing us any money, right?
Yeah.
Um, so the only way to increase revenue would be to increase the cost of the bags.
Yeah.
And at, and at some point in time, just as a general recommendation, while we like to keep our costs to our constituents or our taxpayers down, if our cost for purchasing the bags keeps going up, the idea that the bags are supposed to help offset, you know, uh, uh, another budget would probably need to be examined.
It should be tied, right? Yeah.
And I agree. And I know that the last time we did a budget or did a proposal, we only got one kind, this one company was the only company who came back. So everyone complains about quality, but there's only so much we can do about that at this point, which is sad, but true.
All right. Let's move on to health.
Five ten.
Five ten. Okay, now we need a minute to, actually, I need a minute at least. So, sorry, yeah, increases mostly attributed to some salary and wages increases?
Uh, brief description of the budget. It's gone up just under ten thousand dollars. The bulk of that, quite honestly, all of it would be within uh, in, you know, either contractual increases or the COLA uh, increases that we were told to put in our budget.
Yep.
Yeah, one of the things is you went from a part-time clerical to a full-time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jumped that a little bit.
Right, right. There's part-time.
Five percent increase, but that's actually an increase in hours.
So, correct. Uh, additionally, uh, come January, she would be due a step increase also because it would be her one-year anniversary. So the first three years of a union employee's employment, they get steps each year and then after that, you gotta wait. So you'll notice in new employees and highway department would be the same and any new employee.
What were the um, weekly hours previously? In what are the budgets?
So she's thirty-six hours now. Uh, Umberta was working about twenty-seven.
What is health and professional tech for fifty-five thousand dollars?
That's the money that uh, we utilize for outside technical services. That's uh, been allotted by the selectmen to the board of health to use.
Okay, what's?
You wanna, you wanna know specifically what we're using it? It's the same thing that we were using it for last year, right? So it's, it's to bring in outside engineers and, and technical people to uh, help us look at Excel and, and, and some of the oversight and compliance.
So you're talking about, okay, so you're talking about professional people just in those fields and hiring somebody for a field.
Yeah, so an example.
Yeah.
Uh, we have complaints about a business. In this particular instance, it would be Excel, right, in this instance.
Yeah.
Uh, and so we don't have the means and methods and, and the specialists.
We're hiring an engineer that, that his job is, that's what his job is.
Exactly. And they come in and they provide us with the, you know, reports and things. And it only gets used if it needs to get used, right? So if we don't need somebody to come in, then it would still be there.
Yeah, and well, it goes back to the general fund and, right, okay. So there's a difference in the numbers, the two one, uh, two budget sheets that I have, there's a slight difference, like a three hundred dollar difference. I'm just curious what happened to that.
Who was it?
The education went down.
Say again?
Nine hundred to six hundred. Health education incentives, I think. It was previously nine hundred and, and moved partially to six hundred.
Okay, that's a while.
Any other questions?
No.
Looking up that?
Yeah, that's it, right?
And you don't have any other capital or, uh, no, so yeah, you're good?
No, no, just thank you for uh, the town purchased a couple of new vehicles, uh, I know for the building department and the board of health. So just wanna thank you. They arrived last week after a long wait. It does take a long time to get those cars in, I'll tell you. Uh, so thank you very much.
Where the vehicle maintenance line item was removed? I was curious.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, some of that, some of that was removed because uh, and I saved thirty-five bucks cuz I couldn't even get the last one inspected. It was so bad. So I saved thirty-five bucks that way.
This one out here is um, Carl's.
That's Carl's.
Oh, that's Carl's.
He parks it here and takes his truck.
So it's the very same vehicle.
But it's the same vehicle.
So again, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, have a good night, folks. Good to see y'all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we done?
Well, I said before, is that administrator? You wanna do me? My budget, I don't even know where it is.
Talk about that new one you just gave us?
Yes, we do wanna talk about them and, and I made some changes to a couple of budgets today.
It's gonna be an issue.
What?
Yeah, it's about on the agenda.
It's, I think it says our other related.
I do believe it says.
Other, other may be discussed as a club.
Oh, hey, all right, perfect.
Yeah, so I think we're okay. We're all talking about the budget. Um, I, I don't know where my paperwork is. Give me a minute. Here you go. Yeah. So I'll tell you what I put in my budget that I, you know, that I, I, I did today cuz I changed four of them. For me, I added fifty thousand dollars for HR, human resources. Lately, with the culture and the change in, in the town hall and in employees, I'm spending a great deal of time on HR. Um, which takes away from grant management, reporting that I have to do my regular, you know, just preparing the budget, preparing this warrant. There's just, there's only so many hours in the day and I'm finding I, I, it's just not a one-time thing. Every, every week, there's another issue with HR. And it re, it, it, it demands that I stop what I'm doing immediately and, and intervene and go do interviews and do reporting. And it's one of those things that you need to make sure you, you cross your Ts and dot your Is. There's a lot of employees and it's not just those issues. There's a lot of health insurance questions. There's a lot of issues that go with HR that I think we're at a point now with a seven, at least seventy-five full-time employees. We're, we're growing departments. Uh, we need an independent HR person because the other part of this is I work hand-in-hand with all these department heads and I need them to work with me and I need to work with them. And now if I'm the one that also has to discipline them, it becomes very like I now do.
One half on the.
And I now do it, but I just feel like it would be much more effective to have an independent outside person that doesn't, isn't friendly with everybody and doesn't have to work every day with them side by side, which is what I feel like I have to do with the department heads and, and I want to do that. I, so I thought it's time for us to somehow, whether we, we get um, resource it out and get an outside firm that, that does that or whether we hire somebody part-time. We don't need somebody full-time, but we definitely need to do something. There needs to be a resolution and I don't think it can wait another year.
Twenty hours a week. For this last year too, I, right, did you bring this up?
We brought it, an article at um, a fall town meeting asking for, to be funded and it got turned down. But it doesn't have to be. It can be in the budget, you know what I mean? I'm, like I said, you can say no. I just feel like at this, at this juncture, it, it.
What are the employees?
There are about seventy-five full-time employees, I believe.
And it, and it.
There's twenty-five in the town hall, the town hall, the libraries.
And part of it also too is as if depending on what they do and I, if someone was experienced in identifying where we lack, right? More than just disciplinary and stuff. So it's moving us forward.
Yeah, I always think about too, like, with everyone being so litigious this day, this day is like, like, we're gonna get sued, right? We have, we are being sued by a couple of different former employees. Having a HR firm or HR person and resource would make, make sure everything's documented properly and, and, and that could out save money, I think, in the long term.
Well, and there's these, and that's why I say it's more than just disciplinary stuff. It's just paperwork and the paperwork that we need to compile and keep on file for everybody's. And, you know, um, so that's, right now, the treasurer's department does parts of that. If there's an FMLA request, that goes to Luanne and she does that part of it and I'm doing disciplinary parts of it. And then we're very disjointed with it. If you will have an insurance question, really, nobody has the answer. It's like, I don't know. You go downstairs and ask and they go, I don't really know. I'm like, okay, well, I'll call town. We need somebody who has this information, can, can give it to the employees, maybe set up a. Maybe set up a, an online data where the employees can get their own information. Or, you know, and it ha, it will keep track of who's completed what paperwork. You know, we, we want annual. CDL checks and things like that. There's the things that I think need to go through HR. We're getting bombarded with it.
Also implement like different kinds of like trainings. I, I mean, I know like I have to do a lot of that stuff myself. I don't love doing it, but I think there is a benefit.
Yeah, well, Luann just spent all day booking trainings, mandatory trainings for our staff. She did that tonight. First she's gonna find them and then she did it. Um, we've been doing, since the OSHA meeting, we've done a ton. And I mean, we really, Luann. But she has put together a bunch of training packages and I'm not even sure, that's the other thing is, OSHA wasn't. Municipalities were never required to comply with OSHA. Probably five years ago, they changed that. And it never really got implemented in the town of Freetown. So now I'm trying to catch up and I'm trying to just figure out, every department has different OSHA requirements. So now I'm trying to, I'm trying to get the department heads and they're working on it. Like come up with a plan, look at what your department needs and, and get your training. So no, Chuck has done a, a, a lot. Luann has done some more, um. And we're trying to coordinate, but there's a lot to it. You know, every department's different. Uh, we need a certain one. Transfer station needs certain trainings. The highway needs different tra- and there's a lot. I wanna say highway needs like fifteen different trainings.
Yeah.
And how do I track whether they've done them or not? It's hard. It's just becoming to a point where I don't think. I, I definitely can do it. It's just, can I do it and manage the grants and apply for grants and manage the day-to-day budgets and other things?
Something's gotta give, right?
Exact- I think that's where I'm at. You, you can direct this any way you want. I can take on the HR, but then I don't think I'll be getting the million dollars in grants. That I've been able to secure for the town and keep the pro- it's not even the grants too, it's the projects that come with the grants. Because I always, I'm the one that's overseeing.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about like the construction projects we have now and the ones that are coming in the future.
Right.
Like, I mean, I.
Yeah, right now we got the fire station addition. Um, I just met with them for three hours going through those other plans. We've got the pods coming for the COA. I'm just getting those plans and, uh, ready to finalize those, but I also now have to get the site work done and I'm working with the engineer on that. Um, the, the tower, the radio tower project, um, is coming just about to fruition, but I had a meeting on that this week. So all of these things take my time, you know?
Yeah, a bunch of stuff, yeah.
That's what it is. If, if, like I said, um. I, I, I wouldn't put it in here if I didn't feel that we strongly need it.
I suspect the, oh, sorry. I suspect the HR needs a municipality are pretty unique. Are there other towns that use like an HR service?
I don't know. We'll have to look for it. I, I mean, originally I was thinking of like, lots of towns will share staff, like they'll have a planner that goes between two towns. That would be beneficial for us if we can find another town that's in the same situation where they, they don't wanna take on a full-time employee. Which we do not need a full-time employee.
It almost sounds like a full-time job, though, it's you.
I think once it got organized, it wouldn't be as bad, right? And of course, we've all been doing parts of it, so we would get that person where they need to go. But I, I definitely a part-time twenty-hour-a-week job. I mean, that's why the, the budget is the budget. I added fifty thousand dollars. If you were looking at full-time HR, you'd be probably a hundred thousand dollars or better. Um, it, or I'm.
What else could they be responsible for? I mean, look at one way, we don't need a full-time, but if you had a full-time and she wasn't using up all of her time. And HR problems, what else could we, could she handle? Is there some, something else that she could handle?
I think we have lots. Uh, it, within our department, we're quite busy.
Well, I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. If you have a full-time person that, that handled all the HR problems. It probably wouldn't take up all of her time and she could spend, uh, uh, the extra time. And helping you with other things, not just HR.
I think I'm just a little reluctant because of our space constraints right now.
All this stuff, my next question is where would you put her? Where, you know, the roof is taken, so.
The attic is taken too, so, um, so that's kinda why I'm thinking and out, outsource it.
Yeah.
You know, um, a little bit because to bring in another person into the town hall. You know, we have no parking. You, you know the concerns. And so we are working, um, on moving some things around to get some space. But I don't wanna immediately, I need the people within the town hall to have a little more space than they have right now.
Um, we need a lot more space, a lot of space.
So that's, that's the reluctance.
You know, when you look down, when you look at budgets and you look down the road, I mean, eventually we're gonna have to do something with that town hall, maybe eventually.
Yeah.
I mean, it is to that particular point.
We were bulging at the seams.
Is it gonna last another, uh, twenty years? I mean, it possibly could, but not with people in it because eventually people who've stopped on for the floors over there. So you gotta do something. So what's the decision gonna be? You know, are we gonna come out here and construct a new building? Or we're gonna rehab what we have? I mean, the estimates five years ago was fourteen million dollars to rehab that town hall.
Yeah.
I, I mean.
And then think, I mean, I could.
And then it still wouldn't be big enough.
We still wouldn't have parking.
It, it doesn't solve, exactly. That's the other problem, right? It doesn't solve all of our problems.
That's the point. And even if you put a causeway in between the old library, which is now weather tight. And, and that building, that addition alone is another seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand dollars. And these are five-year-old lessons. I don't know what town it was today.
Triple that, probably.
Yeah, triple that, you know? Is it worth it? No. Uh, we, but on the, on the other hand, I just, I'd just like to say that, you know, having sticked up buildings with the union labor in town. Is killing us and, you know, you can buy a steel building or whatever and you see him. I'll give you an example of Juniors in town. I mean, th- there's a building that's got tremendous amount of space. You can make it look like anything you want on the outside and the inside. And it was probably a fifth of what it's gonna cost us for the addition on the, uh, fire station. You know what I mean? I, and I understand that there's, there are concerns in that you have to start hiring OPMs and all of that stuff. If it goes with a million dollars, which is, is as far as I'm concerned, I don't understand it, but, you know. It's costing us a lot of money for a little bit of square footage. That's my point. And I think there, there's something we should consider as far as the number, the space that we need to get people out of the town hall. And we're not gonna be spreading them around to different places. We need them all in one place.
We, we've talked a lot about that, right? And this isn't anything new and, and not putting a Band-Aid on the situation, right? That, that's, but at what, at what cost?
But at some particular point, we're gonna have to buy some oil there and then do something about this. And even if we did it in stages. And had a, uh, they had a building that we could put additions on every two years or every three years, we'd be in that pressure. I think that would probably be the way to go. But we've been talking about this, uh, as far as I know, for forty years.
I got a couple of other budgets that I adjusted that I wanna run by you.
Okay.
Um, IT, you'll see I, I added and I don't know where mine went, but I added some money to IT. Because we are talking about annexing a space for the town hall. And if I do that, I'm gonna need a server at that space.
Fifty-five.
Yeah, I gave you a new one. Did you guys put them in there?
Yep.
It's one seventeen-two, I think is what I'm asking for now. So that's what it's about, is that if we do get another spot and annex, which we've talked about. Um, I will need to set up a server over there and it's gonna cost a little bit of money for equipment and a little bit of money for, um. You know, to get it done. So that's the change I made. We're gonna need that money. IT money goes like crazy. Um, any questions?
Uh, I may, sorry, sorry.
Other than that, it was, it was level funded before I added, added to it.
Perfect.
What was the other ones?
Change in budget, me?
Yeah.
Um, I took the community program director. Uh, communications is one. Community program director, she has a six thousand dollar budget for events. I increased it to ten thousand dollars because everything is just a lot of money. And until her revolving account is taking in money that she can then, we can allocate it at next town meeting for her to spend it. I, I, she needs a little buffer money. That makes sense.
Just, just so I understand, and, and I saw that you went from six to ten and whatever is coming in, is that on top of that?
So if we get money.
Money through the revolving fund or is that gonna go in the revolving fund?
To be spent in future years, right? Cause I can't.
Okay.
I can't, I have to get like a year to get it into the revolving fund. And then she can at the, you, when you see our board, right? We have all the revolving funds where we say, okay, we'll allow you to spend nine thousand dollars out of revolving fund. That's all they can spend. Even if there's fifty thousand dollars in the revolving fund, all they can spend is nine thousand. But right now she has no money in the revolving fund. I can't allocate her to spend any because there isn't any. So I'm just trying to get her so she can start collecting funds and then. At next year's town meeting, we'll spend some of it. She's always gonna have, I think, some budget for events because some things are gonna be free.
You know, she's not, that's not what she's doing with money.
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I just wanna.
Yeah. Um, any questions on that one? And, and the last one is the communications budget. I added. I think your paperwork says twenty-four-six, but I got my numbers. I added nineteen thousand, six hundred to it and that's for the tower leases for the radio communications. We have, uh, an article that we got a couple of years ago at the town meeting that we've been using, but it's gonna run out and I need to fund those leases. So those are for the towers that we're leasing for the new, you know, the radio communications that. The deadline or the, the, the up and running date is supposed to be, uh, June twenty-eighth. So we're hoping by July fourth, they're all up and running and working. So we just had a meeting a couple of days ago.
We have anybody in focus to use in the space on the tower?
No, we haven't, but I, I, if I have time, and I have no idea when that will be, I would like to put out an RFP to. See if anybody would like to rent the space on the, on the tower. I have it drafted.
Be great, just, also for cell phone service around here.
Right.
It'd be awesome, you know?
Uh, again, I would think somebody would step up.
Yeah.
So that's, and that was it. So, uh, uh, unless, I mean, if, if you have objections, we can discuss them, but, um. There, there was ample money in the budget to, to do those changes. I don't know.
Cause it is, I'm wanting to give everybody a leaving, is it just?
Yeah, um, as long as you don't mind charging them twice next year.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, um, we have our May fifteenth meeting got moved to May ninth. Thursday night, six o'clock here in the police station. Um, we'll go over all the, we'll go through the omnibus, all the budgets and make our recommendations. Alright, I will entertain an option, an motion to adjourn.
Maury, if you're gonna try and do this, you're gonna try and do this on the line, so we're gonna have two meetings.
No, we just have the one. Most of them, I mean, if, if there's any. Yep, okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Kating, um, all in favor? Aye, all of us.
Alright.
Alright, we are adjourning as of seven nineteen.
Luann, am I good to adjourn as well? I think we're good, right? So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion me.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.